A meeting to order. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Brian, second by Mary. Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor, you can say on.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is public comment. I see that we have some public comments today already. We'll see how many more participate. I'd like to have a count of that as I read the statement. State Board's agenda is full, and I may place limits on the public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude, and the board will move on to the next speaker. Department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an agenda on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. I have Margaret Buckton here, and then I'd also like to get a count of anybody else on Zoom or anybody in attendance who's planning on making a public comment.
Good morning. We have 22 people on Zoom. If you are on Zoom, you can just use the raise your hand feature if you like to speak before the board, and we'll make sure we get to you. If you're on the phone, you can just press star nine, and it will enable to raise hand for you. Thank you.
Okay, Margaret.
Good morning. Margaret Buckton from the Urban Education Network and the Rural School Advocates of Iowa, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. As you all know, the 2023 legislative session enacted an extraordinary amount of new law that school districts are working really hard with to comply. A lot of it effective July 1st, but they're still waiting on your action as far as implementing administrative rules and the DE's assistance in better understanding the law. So they're kind of feeling in limbo, and I was at SAI yesterday and talked to a lot of school administrators about what they're doing to implement. This rulemaking has really high stakes for students. You know, students find their passions, their interests, their joy of reading, how they relate to others, empathy, reason, knowledge of the world, and even themselves in books and classrooms. And so if the state board and department don't provide clarity to assuage some of the fears that school staff are dealing with right now, some students may not have this opportunity, at least for a period of time while we're waiting for things to unfold. Just a little context, the DE has traditionally given guidance to school districts to help with understanding expectations, and there are indications, and I think they're exciting indications, that the executive branch wants to respect local control, also known as home rule, and that's in Iowa Code 274.3. This code requires you to liberally construe the statute to effectuate the purposes of local control. But this is kind of a sea change for local school leaders, especially coming out of the pandemic that had heavy state control, and they're concerned about making a mistake. So they're turning to school attorneys whose focus is risk management, not necessarily what students need. So we're hearing some concerning things about schools potentially being too conservative in their interpretation or overly interpreting the law. Some specific things to consider as we collectively work to interpret, and this will affect your rulemaking and any discussions you have with the community. First, to quickly define the DE's investigation process concerning compliance with age-appropriate curriculum and library books. Include a chance for local districts to remedy any complaints before consequences are applied. And once rulemaking and penalty processes are defined, respect the time it takes to transparently implement local board policies so community members can weigh in. Second, respect reasonable local board policies. And there was an article in the Des Moines Register that quoted our Senate Education Committee Chair, Senator Rosenbaum, who said, "There are books that schools know, books that have very explicit, sometimes perverse pornographic descriptions." Local school boards should be able to use words like that to clarify what they mean by sex acts that cross-reference to 702.17, so that staff is sure that they're not violating the law in that gray area. Is this just a suggestion as opposed to an explicit expression? The last and third thing is new chapter 279.80 prohibits any program, curriculum, test, survey, questionnaire, promotion, or instruction relating to gender identity or sexual orientation, and this is for students in kindergarten through grade six. This must be reasonably and consistently applied. So that definition of sexual orientation cross-referenced in the law means actual or perceived heterosexuality, homosexuality, or bisexuality. So it's all three. So if a book is excluded because it has a family with two moms, two dads, or even two male penguins, then you also have to exclude books that have a mom and a dad. And that is going to be really problematic when you look at all of the curriculum instruction and library materials available to our elementary students who are trying to define their role in families. And that would simply be absurd, but it's not absurd to prevent using these materials to persuade students to change their gender identity or encourage any of the sexual orientation iterations, and obviously should not include any sex acts. And I think that's the reasonableness that the legislature meant when they put these restrictions on school districts. We can't sometimes know legislative intent, so it's tricky, and so we really count on your further conversation as you implement rules and look forward to assisting in that any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? Again, use the raise your hand feature. If you're on the phone, you can just press star nine, and I'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone does. All right, seeing nothing at this time.
There's no further public comment. We'll close that section of the agenda, and we'll move on to the Director's Report. We'd like to welcome our new Director, Director Snow.
Thank you so much, President Roberts, and thank you, members of the State Board of Education. Good morning. I am so excited to be with you all and honored by the opportunity to serve shoulder to shoulder with you on the State Board. I'd like to first start by saying thank you. Thank you for your service on the State Board of Education, advancing its mission to champion excellence for Iowa students through leadership and through service. And of course, public service is a great honor and a great responsibility, so thank you for taking on these critical roles on the board and your respective roles in the field. I've been asked to share our unified Department of Education statewide priorities, and I'd like to start with our vision. Our North Star is to ensure all students have access to a high-quality education that inspires them and prepares them for the future. Our vision is a best-in-class education system that sees every child, meets every child where they are, and gives them what they need to realize their incredible individual potential. So what do we mean by a best-in-class education system? It's a system that empowers families and teachers to best serve students together in partnership. It fosters innovation and supports personalized learning. It focuses resources on the classroom and what has the greatest impact on student learning, student achievement, student growth. It empowers students with multiple pathways to post-secondary success, including through apprenticeships, internships, dual and concurrent enrollment, and more. It supports vibrant, safe, and healthy learning environments, and it provides transparency and accountability for our families, our educators, our communities, and for taxpayers. So like you, my career has been guided by that North Star. Before we dive into some priorities and updates, I'd just like to introduce myself. I most recently served as the Virginia Deputy Secretary of Education, which, in addition to the Department of Education, included the Virginia Community College System, five higher education centers, and the Virginia School for the Deaf and the Blind. Prior to that, I served as the Division Director of the New Hampshire Department of Education, where I oversaw academics and assessment, special education, career development, adult education, wellness, and nutrition. And as Policy Director at the U.S. Department of Education, among other federal roles, we implemented the CARES and CARISA Acts, the COVID-19 Response and Recovery Acts, where we provided over $75 billion to states, districts, and to educational entities. We also administered a $475 million innovation fund that launched first-of-their-kind grants, and just a sampling includes professional development for teachers to best facilitate inclusion for students with disabilities, student-centered funding pilots, course access with a focus on rural communities, and ensuring access to work-based learning opportunities, especially for students from low-income backgrounds, students with disabilities, and students who are English language learners. Prior to that, I worked at an education policy nonprofit that's focused on opportunity, pathways, and accountability, where I had the opportunity to support states in policy development and implementation. And I began my career in the classroom, teaching remedial courses at the University of the Free State in South Africa, and I am a fifth-generation Kansan and a proud Midwesterner, so excited to be back in the Midwest. And now in Iowa, we are focused on supporting evidence-based reading instruction so that every single child can read by third grade. I've helped lead this work in New Hampshire through the Lean Into Literacy Initiative, and also in Virginia through the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. That work included investing in reading specialists and coaches to train teachers and support evidence-based instruction, celebrating teachers who became experts in evidence-based reading instruction, working with our teacher preparation programs to align their curriculum, supporting districts in providing high-quality and service professional development, ensuring the use of evidence-based curriculum and instructional materials across classrooms, and investing in evidence-based interventions that were targeted at meeting the needs of English language learners, and then creating individualized reading plans for those students who are not on track to read by third grade, and providing parents tools to advance literacy at home. The department is also focused on expanding college and career pathways that empower students to earn a credit or a credential. We have a lot to celebrate with Iowa's robust dual and concurrent enrollment programs, and we're also working to ensure that all students have the opportunity to earn an industry-recognized credential in an in-demand, high-wage, or public-good career pathway. And just last year, Iowa adopted the CTE middle school standards to support career exploration in earlier grades and to help build those foundational skills and knowledge. And thirdly, we're focused on ensuring resources are targeted to those communities, those schools, and those students who are most in need. This work includes expanded school improvement supports, and it also includes ensuring that teachers are prepared and empowered to provide inclusive educational environments for students with disabilities, and the preparation and the training of general education teachers and administrators is critical to that, too. And of course, all of that's made possible by having a great teacher with every child in every classroom. So in Virginia, I helped lead efforts to improve teacher recruitment and retention, especially through apprenticeships and through residency programs. And in partnership with Iowa, the Iowa Department of Workforce Development, we are continuing to support the teacher and para educator apprenticeship program. So I look forward to learning from each of you about the challenges that we can help the field solve and the best practices that we can help replicate across schools. I'd also like to dive into some department updates. Specifically, I'm going to cover alignment, department awards, events, trainings, and recent engagement with the fields as well. And we'll cover updates on ESAs in the 2023 legislative session summary of changes affecting schools, also known as the letter to the field, when they are addressed in the agenda. So alignment launched across state government on July 1st, and the department had the opportunity to welcome the Board of Educational Examiners, the Governor's STEM Advisory Council, Iowa College Aid, Iowa Educational Services for the Blind and Visually Impaired, and the Iowa School for the Deaf. And notably, alignment included the creation of a Division of Higher Education, in which there are three bureaus: College Aid, Community Colleges in Post-Secondary Readiness, and Educational Examiners. And I want to thank the Department of Education team for their teamwork and their professionalism throughout alignment and for always putting Iowans first. And as a unified agency, we have the opportunity to leverage our collective expertise and our resources to best serve students, families, and teachers together. And we've already seen how that work, how that alignment is improving our work and thus better serving the field. Regarding internal updates, we hosted an all-staff welcome reception in July, and we'll host another welcome reception next Wednesday, highlighting the recently oncoming staff. And we also hosted a Lunch and Learn that spotlighted the Governor's STEM Advisory Council and aligning entity last month. And then next Monday, we will host another Lunch and Learn spotlighting the Bureau of College Student Aid. Regarding awards, at the Future Business Leaders of America, Iowa FBLA High Schools took home six top-10 awards, and a Waki High School student, Anika Yadab, was named National FBLA North Central Region Vice President. Iowa FBLA Collegent took home seven of, seven top-10 awards, and the Iowa State University student Benjamin Kilazari was named National FBLA Vice President of Communications. And the University of Northern Iowa was first place in the Outstanding Chapter Award, and Madison Kramer completed her term as FBLA Collegent National President. So Iowa was very well represented. The Iowa Association for the Deaf presented Tina Cloud, who is the Iowa School for the Deaf Chief Academic Officer, with its education award for meritorious and exceptional service in the field of education, which we're very proud of. Regarding events, we hosted the fourth annual, co-hosted the Fourth Annual Construction Camp for Girls, which was held on the DMAC Urban Campus. And the camp, which was sponsored in partnership with Des Moines Public Schools and the National Association of Women in Construction and Central Iowa ACE Mentorship Schools, provided an opportunity for middle school and for high school girls ages 14 to 18 to explore construction-related careers, learning from women who are working in those fields now. The department also welcomed 11 new teachers this week as a part of the Visiting Teachers from Spain Program, which is hosted in partnership with the Ministry of Education and Culture of Spain. The program provides local school districts and accredited non-public schools with the opportunity to fill vacant Spanish teaching positions with highly qualified Spanish educators. The visiting teachers will teach Spanish at the secondary language and/or dual and dual language and emergent programs at the elementary level. And then thirdly, the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council hosted the Iowa STEM Externships Program at the Des Moines Area Community Colleges Ankeny Campus for 82 teachers and their workplace hosts. And again, that's a program that partners with Iowa teachers and local workplaces to have Iowa teachers gain firsthand experience to help bring the classroom curriculum to life. The Bureau of College Student Aid hosted the Gear Up Iowa Future Ready Kickoff just this Tuesday, and more than 50 educators, counselors, and administrators from 11 different districts attended to collaborate and prepare their programming for the upcoming school year. And again, this program serves nearly 5,000 underserved students at partner schools, providing them with a variety of services that are aimed at preparing them academically, financially, and inspirationally to enroll and succeed in college. And then a few featured trainings before we close. One very exciting training is related to the Education Visualization and Analytic Solution or EVOS. And over 200 educators attended EVOS, a training, attended EVOS training held in Des Moines in July, and attendees had the opportunity to learn how EVOS can help them examine data to inform their decisions related to student supports, educator, professional development and supports, and school improvements. We're very excited about the state investment in that resource and excited about the interest of districts and utilizing that to inform where students, where student need is and what those student needs are. The Bureau of Nutrition and Health Services Education Program Consultants completed the final of six different regional culinary trainings this week in Cherokee and in New Hampton, and participants prepared 12 different recipes that can be implemented in their local nutrition programs, and each recipe was a winner of an Iowa culinary competition featuring a local ingredient. And again, these trainings are made possible through a USDA Team Nutrition Grant, and were very well received. And then finally, my engagement. So I've had the opportunity to provide remarks recently at the Iowa Reading, Iowa Science of Reading Summit at the Iowa Reading Research Center, and had the opportunity to share more about our statewide focus on supporting evidence-based reading instruction so that every child can read by third grade. And also, the department's Dyslexia and Science of Reading Consultant, Wanda Story, led two breakout sessions there that were oversubscribed, which is wonderful. I also spoke with community colleges trustees and presidents about empowering learners with multiple pathways to post-secondary success at the Iowa Community Colleges Conferences, Conference at Kirkwood Community College, and had the opportunity to visit Davenport Public Schools, where we saw evidence-based instruction and materials in action through their summer programming at Fillmore and Hayes Elementary Schools. We also visited Mid-City High, where we met with students who are focused on core course completion. And high school students across that district completed over 200 courses this summer. So it was a great visit with dedicated educators, super-engaged students, all of whom are working this summer to improve literacy and numeracy and to make sure students stay on track for graduation. And then finally, we addressed the School Administrators of Iowa or SAI New Superintendent Summit, and then just this morning, addressed the full council, excuse me, full SAI Annual Conference, talking about our priorities around literacy pathways and targeting resources to communities and schools and students in need. So this is just a snapshot of the department's incredible work and the great work of our dedicated team. So thank you again for your service on the State Board and your service to the field, and thank you for embracing high expectations for every child, for helping families engage in their children's education, and for supporting student, supporting teachers and doing their best work. Iowa has a very strong foundation in education and a deep commitment to educational excellence for all children, and I'm excited to continue to build on that together. So thank you, wonderful to be with you.
You hit the ground running.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the thorough report. I catch in your comments that we'll wait to discuss the date, latest data for ESA and also with the Senate File 496 with the removal of books and stuff until we get to the field report. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, we have, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Number of items are including minutes from June 8th, Turbo University, Central Rivers, VA, and Northwest A.A. Those four items are on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Brian, second by Cassandra. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is Rules, Chapter 20, ESA.
Morning, Mr. President, Director Snow, members of the board. You have before you today proposed final rules to implement the Students First Education Savings Account Program as mandated by House File 68 from the last session. Just for some blocking and tackling, we already adopted emergency rules, which are currently in effect. This is a rulemaking process where when these final rules are adopted, or when final rules are adopted, they will automatically replace the emergency rules that you adopted earlier this, at your main meeting. So these rules have a few changes from the emergency rules that are proposed to you. The first would allow the director, allow the department to consider income reductions after the filing of the previous year's tax returns. Sometimes things happen, and the proposal was based on a concern that this is a program for the public good and for children, and it, this particular portion of the rule has a two-year limitation. After the second year, there will be no income restrictions. So in the interest of supporting families, the recommendation is to change from the emergency rules to allow the director to consider case-by-case basis, income changes, income decreases after the filing of the previous tax return. The second proposed change from the emergency rules arose out of public comment, and one of the public commenters who raised this point is in the room, Margaret Buckton on behalf of her two agency clients. The proposal is to clarify that an approved provider, right now the emergency rules say an approved provider that has a license or a credential issued by the state of Iowa. The proposal is to clarify that the credential or license must be relevant to the service being provided. I think that's a common sense clarification, adds some greater accountability to approved providers, some greater assurances for parents that if somebody hangs out their shingle as an approved provider, they're actually providing and have the authorization to provide what they say they're providing. And then the final change was pointed out by the Administrative Code Editor, who is a phenomenal editor, and he noted that there was some language in the emergency rules that might be self-defeating, that might make eligible expenses ineligible, so there's a clarification in the definition of ineligible expense, eligible and ineligible expenses to make that line cleaner. There were a couple of rule, or a couple of comments to these rules that are either not necessary or not actionable. There was some request in public comment to specify in rules which assessments, to specify some additional content, which is already set out in the statute. House File 68, self-executing, there's no need to restate those in a rule. It adds zero value, so that I understand, understand the point, but not a purpose for rules to simply restate the underlying statute. There were concerns regarding clarifications regarding online schools and online providers. Believe that the rules themselves adequately draw that line, so no additional changes are necessary. One comment or request for clarification, what happens if a student drops out, drops out of a non-public school or does not enroll? No rulemaking is necessary because ESA funds are in the state's possession until the child enrolls, and a parent approves an invoice from a non-public school. There was a comment from a lay member, not a, not a member of the sort of the lobbying or advocacy community, raising concerns about the constitutionality of the income limitation. The department's not able to recommend action on that because it's in the statute, statutes to presume constitutional. That's not our role. That's a role for the legislative branch or the judicial branch, not the state board, not the department. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Good question. Thomas, 20.4, that's five, talks about Attorney General Garland to appeal to the State Board of Education. Any administrative decision? Obviously, you know, the State Board had my attention a little bit. Can you talk about how that might play out? Are there any intermediate steps in the appeal process, or something, you know, that just come to the State Board?
Well, the reference is to Chapter 6, and Chapter 6 will provide that if there is an appeal that isn't successfully negotiated, the, the current business model for the department is to attempt to resolve disputes to, so that not everything is escalated immediately with the State Board. The department is practicing a great deal of preventative law to try to address families' concerns, to try to address schools' concerns. So first of all, the volume is not, the volume won't be everybody who has an axe to grind immediately gets on your gen. The second thing is the process will be as any other administrative appeal will be. It will be heard by an administrative law judge who will issue a proposed decision, which will then, then come to you for consideration. So similar to appeals that you've heard in the past, that the rule reference to Chapter 6 will funnel these appeals through the pre-existing process.
So the process will be pretty much the same as what we experienced in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe just out of curiosity, Thomas, if someone drops out of a non-public school, non-public, report that to the public, how would the finances be distributed as opposed to, to just keeping it in the private school?
I'm going to ask Dr. Cassandra Klein, who actually knows dollars and cents. I'm going to ask Dr. Cassandra Klein, who actually knows dollars and cents. I don't actually work for a lit, she does, she can answer that, that process question.
Happy to help. Hi, you can sign the line. So what happens is the, the funds actually stay within the state until tuition is billed by the non-public school and then approved by the parent. And those go twice a year, so there's a first half amount that's available and then a second half amount that's available. So once those tuition and fees flow and that student actually attends, then those funds for that half then are retained by the non-public school. So if the student were to withdraw, then, you know, say in November, let's just say, no funds would flow for the second half. As far as any other funds, a student entering into a public school, regardless of where they came from, whether it was another public school, a non-public school, a homeschool, Nebraska, wherever, that process is exactly the same.
Thank you.
I, I have two questions. I support what you're talking about here, but seeing the decrease in income provision that can be considered caused me to think, well, what if you don't find out about the decrease in income for two years? Is there a retroactive?
No.
Payment? Okay. And then the flip side is, what if the person finds out subsequent to qualification that they have an increase in income and they no longer qualified for these two particular, the 300% year and the 400% year? Is that addressed anywhere?
So the text of the rule require, authorizes the director to consider reductions.
Right.
Increases if, if there is, after the fact knowledge, after filing a qualification that I had.
A legitimate? After the fact, increase in income, that, that happens routinely in my world.
But once you're, you're.
Okay.
The, if it's an illegitimate, illegitimate, if there was waste, fraud, or abuse, there's mechanisms to address that.
I understand. Sometimes, you know, there, there might be an estate pending and somebody's the beneficiary of a traditional IRA and that's income, but they didn't even know about it until after they applied, you know, that, I mean, there's a lot of things in the weeds here. I guess we'll have to take it a step at a time, but this will be a lot easier when you don't have to, you get past 24.
The director has some latitude in the, in the current rules to sort of consider good faith errors and judgment, folks relied on advice of counsel. So I think that the, the status quo emergency rules address those concerns.
Thank you.
Are we still, who audits that then? Who, who does the auditing?
Sure, so that function will actually be a responsibility of the department. And so the process is going to be actually run through mainly my team. We're in the process of hiring an ESA administrator who will kind of oversee the program itself, and then it will be supporting people to help with the auditing process.
Okay. Thank you. So do we have any more detailed, I guess, data as far as the number of applicants? I'm sure the, the window's closed now, right, for that, because we're at with the number and what other information can you provide?
So I can say from a process standpoint that the application window closes on June 30th, however, Odyssey and the department are still working through some of the manual verifications. So that would mean maybe, maybe somebody didn't have a 2022 tax return, maybe they were moved to the state earlier this year, so they have to provide either residency and home means testing or therapy to have income. And so sometimes, just being a part of that process myself, I know it kind of takes sometimes a couple times back and forth to get everything we need to make an eligibility determination. So those numbers fluctuate every moment. So what is, Heather, do you have the most recent publicly available?
I do have number from July 26th, and as of July 26th, 18,491 applications are approved. But as Cassandra said, we're still working through ones that need some additional implementation.
Didn't we see that there was like over 27,000 applications at one time?
This is approved.
I understand.
Okay.
But of the other 9,000 or plus, how many of those weren't approved versus are still in process? Do you have any feel for that yet?
I know there's going to be some additional information available soon, might even, it's still going to be this week, but we don't have it available.
Okay, thank you.
And what I read is that of the ones that were approved, about 60% were current private students and 40% public students. Is that, is that going to be kind of the, when everything is said and does, are those numbers going to be fairly consistent?
That's what it's looking like, yes.
What disqualifies me?
What disqualifies you?
Yes.
You're over 21.
Okay. So all, you know, this, this disqualification question, the, the text of the statute sets it out, you're not an Iowa resident, you're below income limita, you're above income limitations. We have several folks who applied, well, I'm moving to Iowa in October. Now, there are fixed points in time, you're not old enough to enter. So the, the statute sets out what are the disqualifications, the, the heavy lifting that Cassandra and her team are working through is those marginal cases where the evidence is like, rather than in one document, Iowa tax return, they're pulling evidence from multiple, multiple places. But those are the, the statute and the rule set out what the disqualifiers are, and it's age, residency, income.
I'm assuming that the applications that are not settled yet will be settled very soon, the school start date coming and people trying to make plans as far as am I in or am I out of this funding. This is kind of, you know, brand new frontier for, for all concerned, and I'm assuming, Thomas, that, that will be appraised in timely fashion if we need to revisit rules or whatever that are associated with this, maybe unanticipated changes as Brian brought up as far as what if the income increases. Anyway, other comments or questions?
Good work, thank you.
It is good work. I'll move to approve the proposed recommended rule changes.
Made by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion can give us a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you, Thomas.
And as I do before I leave the table for every rulemaking, I'm going to give you what you'll likely see at your September meeting, and that is roughly 23 rules chapters as part of Executive Order 10, and the department staff will curate those as to what is consent agenda-worthy and what is discussion-worthy, but 23 rules chapters, part of Executive Order 10.
We anticipate a thorough discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Grinnell College, Council of the Educator Preparation Program approved.
Welcome. Hello, my name is Dr. Stephanie Tekev. I'm part of the educator preparation team, along with my colleague, Dr. Kelly Fega and Dr. Miriam Rodzabo, who is unable to be with us today. Dr. Paul Hutchison and Roger Henderson are with us representing Grinnell College today. The reason for bringing Grinnell to the board is detailed in Chapter 256, stating any practitioner preparation leading to licensure is subject to board approval. I, along with my colleagues in the ed prep team, engaged in extensive program review with Grinnell to verify and validate Grinnell's compliance with Chapter 79 standards for their secondary education preparation program. Some quick fast facts about Grinnell's, excuse me, evaluation includes, we started working with them about two years in advance, a total of three program consultants and 14 chairs and faculty from other ed prep programs across Iowa were involved in the review process. They served as volunteers, similar to a peer review. Over 55 responses were reviewed and analyzed from eight different stakeholder surveys that were received during the onsite review, over 30 interviews and three classroom visits were made to interview and engage stakeholders in the process. And after the site visit, I continued to work with the institution for any evidence that was not validated onsite. A final report was compiled and shared with the program on March 2nd. The program responded to recommendations and their resolution of concerns. I understand we're a little short on time today, so I'll be very brief in the resolution of concerns and strengths, but the full information is included in the detailed report has been provided to all of you. The governance and diversity standards are met. A few concerns that have been resolved include a need for increased engagement with content area faculty, which was resolved through the use of a committee structure that was already in place. A practice of candidates being conditionally admitted to the cancer ed program prior to 10 hours of field experience has been disbanded, and a student appeal process, if they're denied a student teaching placement, has been developed and included in the student teaching handbook. The funds for professional development at Grinnell are laudable, but when we were onsite, we realized that not everyone was completely aware of it, so a website has been developed and included on their intranet for increased awareness of those opportunities. The strengths for governance is they have a very well-known and developed conceptual framework that's based in research. The team was impressed as they talked to faculty, students, staff, that there were not only, that the conceptual framework was not just integrated throughout their curriculum and clinical experiences, but everyone could talk with fluidness about their conceptual framework and their purpose. Students have a rare opportunity at Grinnell to be involved in shared governance through a committee in the teacher ed program, and Grinnell continues their commitment to an affordable education through a no-loan program that continues today. For diversity, Grinnell has a fly-in program for prospective students who may not be able to afford to visit campus during their college search, and for faculty hiring initiatives, they have a competency-based hiring practice and they utilize redacted resumes. The faculty standard is met. The main concern has been resolved, which was inconsistent evaluation of adjunct faculty. A new plan and process has been put into place for the program chair to observe the adjunct faculty in the first half of their assignment, followed by a post-observation, discussion, and plan. The strengths of faculty, they have a lot to be proud of and just too many to mention, but one thing that really stood out to the site visit team is just how reflective and committed the faculty are. I mentioned the conceptual framework, but they really place a heavy importance on research and the process of thought and development. It goes beyond just preparing future educators for the field, but also to remain in the field, which is the last strength I'll, I'll finish with today. And in interviewing candidates, it was very clear that the faculty are not only supportive, but they truly do care about the candidates and their progression throughout the program. The assessment standard is where most of the concerns were, and it's not because they weren't adhering to assessment, the assessment standard, but they're in the process of moving from a paper system to an electronic assessment system. Grinnell has a lot to celebrate with how intentional they are for functionality and fidelity of the assessment system. At this point, the basic architecture of it has been developed, and prior to the fall semester, current student data and artifacts have been populated. The next step is to include online applications for the different checkpoints within their program, such as admittance to the education program, student teaching, and so on. Grinnell has a spring annual retreat to review the aggregated data, which will become a much easier process with the electronic system, and to share with stakeholders, such as the advisory committee, for feedback. Good job. You really did good with that. The clinical standard is met and there were no concerns. The knowledge, skills, and disposition standard is met. The one concern was the integration of literacy was not in all content methods courses, it was in three, and now it's in all six. But we required them to integrate that for reading theory, knowledge, and research-based literacy strategies. After the onsite review, Grinnell developed a module, a literacy module, and they were able to pilot it in their science methods course. It was very successful and will be incorporated into the remaining two methods courses, so all six include research-based literacy practices. The strength, the big one that I, I wanted to highlight and end on is, I mentioned earlier, their commitment to not only preparing educators, but for educators to remain in the field. Grinnell engages candidates in the four years of preparation, and then the ninth semester is dedicated to student teaching. Grinnell does an excellent job of tracking their alumni, and over a five-year period from 2017 to 21, the alumni resulted in an incredibly low attrition rate with over 90% of their prepared educators remaining in the field, which is just really exciting, and I congratulate you, you and that. The BOEE has reviewed and approved the proposed program curriculum along with the ed prep team. Through our evaluation, the program is in compliance with Chapter 79 standards. For their teacher preparation program, it is recommended that the board grants full approval to Grinnell College to offer secondary teacher preparation until the next review of the program scheduled for 2030. Now, the program will share some background and highlights of their program. After that, if there are any process questions, I'd be happy to answer those or my team, and if there are any program-related questions, Paul or Roger can handle that. So Paul, the floor is yours.
So I don't have a Zoom link, so I can't share, but I'm going to talk, or you can just all stand behind me. Good morning, thank you for having us. I'm Paul Hutchison, as Stephanie said, Roger Henderson here with me today. I just want to tell you a little, a few things about the program. I'm going to read you a quotation from the 1850 College Catalog of Iowa College, which went on to become Grinnell College. It was in Davenport at the time, not in Grinnell. And 1850 is the first year that there were students, so this is the very first college catalog of Grinnell College. And in a section called the English Department Course of Study, there is a sentence that says, "Those who wish to simply secure a thorough English education or qualify themselves for teaching will find the course of instruction in this department adapted to their wishes." And the thing we want to point out there is, in the first catalog, for the last 170 years, Grinnell College has seen a part of its mission as preparing teachers. And so we think of ourselves that are doing that work at Grinnell today, sort of the current version of that tradition. That department became the English and Normal Department 10 years later, so normal meaning teacher preparation. And then 10 years after that, it became the Normal and English Department, suggesting to us that preparing teachers is pretty much what they were doing by 1870. So there are, let's see, there's eight people on this slide, I'm the program chair, this is sort of who our team is. I'm the math and science faculty member at the college, Roger is our field placement coordinator and licensing officer. There are four other faculty members in the program. We are pretty much broken down by discipline. And then we list an assessment advisor here, Vanessa Priest, she's a college employee, she's an expert in assessment at the college, and as a part of our self-study in preparation for reaccreditation, we worked a lot with Vanessa, she was instrumental in helping us make some changes to our assessment program. And then we have an academic assistant, Travis Renzi. We are a secondary primarily institution, or prepar- We are a secondary primarily institution or preparation. Elementary program has come and gone a couple of times in the last 170 years at Grinnell. Currently, we do not offer elementary licensure. So we offer a variety of endorsements in 512, secondary endorsements. The only K-12 endorsement we offer, we do offer ESL. And so that's, that's been since about the last 15 years we've been able to offer that. So Stephanie mentioned that we did a deep dive into this 2017 to 2021 group of alums who are, who we gave licenses to. There were 31, well, actually, you gave licenses to. There are 31 students in those five years. So that's, we're doing about six a year. That's, that's where we are. And I've got a list here of the, what endorsements they received. English Language Arts is actually the most, the most common one, which we're happy to see. Biology and Chemistry are in the top five. And then American History is the, is the other big one. So that's sort of what our program looked like in those years. I want to tell you a couple of unique things about our program. Our student teaching is a little bit unique. We do a ninth semester program. Most of our students do their student teaching in this ninth semester. So they do eight semesters at Grinnell. They take all the courses required for student teaching, but they don't student teach. They graduate in May, and then they return the following fall to do their student teaching. So that's, that's mostly the way students do that. We do that, it's been a program for a long time, to allow students to take a wide variety of courses. Grinnell prides itself in being an liberal arts institution. And then, and then also, we want students to have the opportunity to do an off-campus semester if they, if they choose to do that. We also have a partnership with two high schools in Minnesota where we do place a few student teachers there. That's an option for our students. We do one or two students. Those two schools are both in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. The other thing I want to emphasize about our program is, is that we have a real focus on student research. Our institution does as well right now, but our program actually predates that. So we scaffold student research skills in the required courses, and then when students do their student teaching, they conduct an action research project that's a part of the seminar that they take while they student teach. And then there's a public presentation of their work of those action research projects. The institution also has a big emphasis these days on student research. There's a program called the MAP program. It stands for Mentored Advanced Project. And, and all of the faculty in the department mentor students in those advanced research projects. And about half of the students who get a teaching license additionally do these, these advanced projects. I have a lovely slide of some pictures of students standing in front of their posters. You can see that after if you'd like. And then I'm, Stephanie kind of stole my thunder. We are really proud of the fact that when we did this deep dive into these classes, 28 of the 31 students were, last year, were actively engaged in K-12 teaching. And we're just, we're really proud of that. Yeah, so that's, that's all I have. We're happy to take questions.
That 90% number is fantastic number.
Thank you.
My question for you is, particular to turn to me anyways, of that 90%, how many are being retained in the field in Iowa? Is that a sense of that number?
So of those 31, so let me, I'm going to qualify this a little bit or give some context. Grinnell attracts students from across the country. Iowa, I think, in incoming class is the number four in terms of where students are coming from in different states. Of those 31 students, eight of them taught in Iowa. I think six of them are still teaching in Iowa. Our students go all over the country, but I, I mean, it's like, we're getting a lot going to, to Chicago and Minneapolis. That's where students have gone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Talk about the, the no-loan aspect to this. I really like, I really like to hear that. Tell us about that and how that's possible.
A very large endowment is the answer. It is, yeah, it's, it's a fairly recent thing. We had a loan cap until about two years ago, a fairly low loan cap. And then, three years ago maybe, the, the college made the commitment to just do a no-loan policy, and so, so financial aid packages that had previously included loans were just being packaged as grants. And, yeah, I, I like it too. It's a nice, it's a nice thing to say to prospective students.
Yeah, and your recruitment process, is that something that you emphasize? I mean, seems to me it would be a, a great attraction.
Recruitment process for our programs?
Yes.
You know, our program is, we are recruiting students who are on campus, right? Like, there are certainly some students who come there thinking that they're going to get a teaching license, but we do a lot of recruitment of students who maybe don't have that idea. So by the time they arrive on campus, they have, yeah. But I assure you that our admissions department is selling that hard. Yes.
And I don't think you're patting yourselves on the back enough. Their, their incoming classes, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they have quite a few first-generation students.
Oh, yeah.
Is it about, I want to say it's broken into almost a third, like, a third?
I was going to say 20%, but I, yeah, our, our first-generation college students who are incoming classes.
And then diverse student population. So very intentional recruiting, I would say.
Do you have a diverse student/teacher population as far as prospective teachers going out to field as far as diverse backgrounds?
So our, again, of this 31 students, about, it was seven or eight, so about a quarter are, you know, sort of non-white students, which is roughly reflective of the, the student population. We have done a couple of things in the last six or seven years where we, we found out, or we recognized a while ago that we were not retaining students of color in the program. They would apply to the program, but they would not complete it at a greater rate than white students. And so that's a thing we have focused on. And one of the things we did was, we, we do have a small pool of money that we distribute to the ninth semester teachers to help them support their expenses, which we were just distributing equally, you know, an equal share to everybody. And we have implemented a need-aware policy of distributing that money. So, I mean, it's one of the things that we did to try and, to try and respond to students. I mean, some of the students who weren't staying in were students for whom that, the financial barrier of the ninth semester was a problem.
Could you tell us a little bit about events for the program, how they, the teacher education?
You want to, or do you want me to?
I'll start.
Okay.
All right. I'm a newbie into the program, so that's why I asked Paul to finish. But processes, their 10-hour requirement in the schools, which is I met, they do clinicals, and they either do that through their ed site program, ed site class first, or kind of a 102 introduction to kind of research in the, in the classroom class, or two options to do that. And once included in that, then at the application, there's a 3.0 GPA through their coursework that they've done to that point. And help me out, Paul, what's, other than?
I mean, it's, so it's an online application. You're thinking about what are the other requirements? Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, they can't be on academic probation, they can't be on honesty probation, and there's sort of those sorts of rules. I mean, certainly at this point in the program, we're not looking to cut anybody out, right? So we, we have established what the requirements are, and if students meet that, we, we accept them. We, as I think all programs have done, we previously were using the C-Base as an entry test, but that requirement has, has gone away. We no longer do that. Is that?
That's fine. Yeah. Mike, as you also, with adjunct faculty, tell me about how those are hired. Is there an evaluation on your part of those folks ahead of time, or?
Sure. So one thing I'd say is, we don't use very many adjunct faculty. I think fewer than, than many of the programs in the state. We are staffed in a way that, that all of the full-time faculty, or the, all of the classes can be taught by full-time faculty. When we have hired adjuncts, or when we do hire adjuncts, it is when faculty members are on leave. So we have year-long sabbaticals. And so last year, two years ago now, I was on sabbatical. And the courses, other than the disciplinary methods courses, were, were covered by other faculty members, or we hire one-year term position faculty members. But the methods courses are not always things that they can teach. So that's mostly where we hire adjuncts. And what we have done is, in terms of vetting, is we hire teachers from the local school district who have masters or higher degrees to teach those courses for us. And so are they vetted? Yes, we know them. Like, there are some teachers I would be more comfortable in our district hiring than other teachers. Sorry, Roger. Former employee of our local district. So, so that's the vetting. And then, I mean, the truth is, we reach out to them. Like, it's, we don't, you know, but if there's a science methods course that needs to be taught, like, I'm, our instructional coach at our high school is a spectacular science teacher, and she taught the course when I was gone.
And you just recently developed an onboarding process.
Right, yeah, that's true. So then, I think the thing that we haven't done a great job of, and this came out in the, in the review, is, once we hire them, how are we supporting them into, into teaching at the, at the institution? And, and so we have, as a part of our process, we have come up with a, with an onboarding process of things that we want them to be exposed to, understanding what the resources are to support, understanding a little bit about the culture. We are going to do, sort of early in the semester, we're going to do a, you know, a visit to the classroom that's partly evaluative to make sure things are going, but it's also an opportunity to have a conversation about the, sort of the culture. I mean, I've taught at a couple of different colleges. Every college is a little bit different. And so, so helping, helping them understand the, the student culture, the teaching culture.
And sharing of syllabus and
Absolutely.
And those, and materials and those types of things that have been done, and, and make sure those are based on standards that have been set by this group. So.
I have a question for Stephanie or Kelly.
Sure.
I know, Seth, with this report, all the standards were met. There were a number of resolutions of compliance concerns. Is that typical when you go through the review?
Very typical.
Okay.
Very typical. And I would say that Grinnell is a pretty special place, and I've, I haven't had the privilege to be at an institution with the number of faculty they have compared to the number of candidates in their program. And so typical governance, compliance concerns were not part of this review. And governance, compliance issues typically bleed into all of the other standards if they don't have the personnel or resources to cover that. And so I would say that this final report, and I kind of shared that with the two of you at the end of the review, will have much fewer concerns because their governance is so strong. And I don't know if I can share this publicly, the number, the amount of money you have per enrolled student? What do you prefer, Anna?
Oh, yeah. I'm curious to know what it is.
Their endowment is.
Oh, the endowment, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where, for every currently enrolled student, they have 1.7 million to spend per year on that candidate. And so it's, but what I will say is, they don't throw money at their problems. They, they're very thoughtful, and they review, and they go and they try to find solutions that work for all parties. But it's, it's pretty exciting, the things that they're able to do with that amount of endowment funds. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
One of the exciting things for me is to see that literacy is still an issue for you folks, even though we're not focused primary. We're middle school to high school, right?
Yeah.
And we're still concerned about issues of literacy and how we, how we meet the needs of kids in that respect. Thank you for that. I think that's, that's great.
Any other questions or comments? Bearing none, the recommendation is to board full approval for the program.
I still move?
Mike has motioned approval. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Any further discussion? Bearing none, those in favor of program approval, if you can, saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this morning. Good job.
Thanks.
We're running a little bit ahead of schedule. We're going to break till 10:15.
You have Suzie Buffett at Openology.
...from the website to look at job postings. So there's no data point that we can share that says these are the, that captures a shortage, but we've been able to kind of develop a proxy for open positions and that sort of thing. So I don't, I don't know if we updated that recently, but I believe we've done that in the past.
It will be included in the beds report that K-12 schools respond to with exactly the number of unfilled positions. So we have a much better data.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And that data will be available around October.
Thank you.
People I visit within the field seem like it's so constant how only to find certified candidates, even qualified certified candidates. And it's not only teachers, but it's other positions as well. I know finding bus drivers is always a challenge and as well as other positions. So the teaching ranks are part of that. Have we cites the beds document? Has there been any type of surveying to the field as far as this type of information requested?
I wouldn't say not like bus drivers and things like that, but we've done the snapshots of looking at the teacher shortage, which is really kind of hard to do because, you know, someone fills a position and when do you take that picture of, you know, when they're not looking at that? So that's why it's gone to that bed data. But as far as like, we do some with support staff, which is what staff, so parent educators, for example, they do an annual report. And so we put that in as, you know, who they are, their education from, you know, what they're seeing as far as how many are going into the field and that type of stuff. But as far as that shortage piece or support, not in our department.
No, but what I will say is attending many conferences on the teacher shortage across the U.S., Iowa's sitting much better than many states are. And, but we have work to do. And so we just were talking with an educator yesterday who said they're short about 20 new jobs every year.
Are we at a point of crisis when it comes to some of these positions, science in particular or math in particular?
I think it depends on how you define crisis. I would say if there's a classroom who doesn't have a teacher, that, that would definitely rise to crisis level. But like I said earlier, not at the same level of some states are going through. I'm not going to say the state, but they're accepting teachers without even a bachelor's degree. They're in such a crisis mode. And so some of the legislation that you brought up is definitely going to help with getting more substitutes in, reducing that age requirement and so on. And as Director Snow mentioned, looking at different pathways to get more involved. And your great question about how many are staying in Iowa, that's another data point that we're really interested in and looking into.
Is there any strategic plan in place to look at data and encourage more participation in teacher prep programs? Or is it everybody's on their own?
So the parent grant, for example, has been really helpful. And I just, that annual report for the parent educator people, that is due at the end of September. And when we look at that, what we see is that people are responding, saying, yes, you know, when you give that parent educator grant to bring them in, we can often retain them to go into the teaching field. But it's like a 10%. It's not, you know, like 50%, you know, for some of them. Now, the teacher prep programs, when they are offering the parent educator, they are more successful in getting them to continue on in their education. So those types of things have seemed to be working. But as far as other strategies of like keeping them in the field, those types of things, even some, there's been some discussion about requiring courses such as, you know, how for teachers to maintain good self-care because there's a high burnout rate, you know, and adding coursework like that along the way. Otherwise...
And we've had two consecutive years of preparing more teachers for the field, which is definitely a different path than most of the nation is on. It continues to drop. And looking at our surrounding states, we're doing much better. I would say last year, we had an additional 300 teachers prepared in Iowa. And that doesn't solve the problem, but we're on a path of improvement of the number that we're preparing. So that's...
You can bring back to Mike's comments as well. When we look at the numbers, the other thing that we see is, so for example, a principal would often, when I was at an institution, would reach out to me and say, do you have any science teachers? And I would say, they're all gone. Or, you know, I would say, I have one left who's looking for a specific spot, you know, that type of thing. And so a lot of times, if you can look at the number of people being interviewed in that field, can also give us an idea that, you know, where that shortage is. So...
I, excuse me.
Oh, I think another interesting data point as we, it isn't also just teacher prep, but also teacher retention and how we're keeping people in the field. So if we're thinking strategically about maximizing educators, we have to think about retention as well.
I don't know how we tiptoe into this thing, this pool of water down here, put my big toe in there and get in trouble. But how is it that we as a board address this issue? Do we have initiative? Do we have a role here in making recommendations to our legislators and to the governor concerning this issue? I think it's worthy of discussion, perhaps next month, maybe.
We have a work session coming up.
This afternoon?
Well, no, in September.
Okay. Just a thought. And I don't know.
Well, we don't have the power to legislate. We don't have, but we have the power to ask questions.
Our team would be happy to provide this data.
I just think, I think what the flexibility that's been given over the last recent years has been very helpful. I'm just wondering, is there more that could be done? I know we may not be in a crisis, maybe trending in the right direction, but is there a plan in place to be maybe more comprehensive in linking, you know, retention and recruitment and everything together so we don't fall back into a crisis mode that, that other states are experiencing? And I'm not sure how that comes about or how it works, but I just think that we have enough expertise between the people in this department, the BOE and people in the field, please include people in the field in whatever discussions there are, to maybe come up with some more suggestions as far as ideas. All ideas would be great, but some of them may be very worth talking about.
Eric, the summary in the letter about House File 604 talks about model policies and their forthcoming from the department. And is, are those policies anything that pass across this table? Or they come right from the department to the school district?
Those do not need State Board approval.
Okay.
Something we are providing to school districts.
Is there an ETA on that?
They're under the, in the review process currently.
Okay. Thank you.
So what are the guidance to the funeral regarding Senate File 496 regarding books, materials, items?
So this letter goes a long way in clarifying what the predictions on the Senate File 496 in response where, you know, we receive communications from the field. It's standard every year, right? We release this letter, get feedback from the field, which is helpful in terms of what perhaps we thought was clear and isn't clear. And as we get that feedback, we review it on a case by case basis and determine how to appropriately respond.
So guidance would be by individuals or guidance in general to whatever?
It depends on the situation and how it would be best addressed.
Talking with educators, there's a lot of confusion right now. And there are people in the field that I've talked with, or look at the DE or somebody who provides directions. Because right now, people are trying to be either guessing what is right or wrong and that being violation of the law. I know it doesn't take effect until it first of the year as far as implementation. Is that correct? So there's a five or six month period here where the law becomes effective. But during that time, there's a lot of confusion. Anything that the DE can do to help alleviate some of that confusion would be more than welcome to people I talk with.
Feedback is appreciated.
Anything else for Eric?
I guess, is there interplay between 604 and 496? Maybe that's a dumb question.
There is some overlap when you look at the bills themselves. They modify similar sections of statute. So, you know, especially if there is investigative procedures that are called for, topics tend to relate to one another. So, yes.
496 talks about school officials doing things, but 604 talks about a teacher doing something.
Correct.
And then later it talks about a principal doing something and then notices to parents. I mean, that'll...
Correct.
The policies that you're working on will all sort of make that all consistent.
The start is to try to work through this document. That's one of the intents, just to lay out exactly what the legislation, what the text says, right? To hopefully provide some of that clarity. That is it going forward.
Thank you.
Anything else for Eric this one? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Excited on the agenda is State Board Retreat Planning.
I think that's intended to be an open discussion, right?
Yes.
For the State Board Retreats.
Yes, it's open discussion, yes. In September. September 12th and 13th are the dates for our retreat. And the last that I heard is that we're looking at, we got in Council Bluffs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have we confirmed the location and dates as far as that, the new early childhood center?
Yes.
Well, can somebody tell me more? We left this discussion, I can go, well, we think it's going to be there, but we need to confirm it. So...
It has been confirmed. I've talked to Dr. Vicky Morello, the superintendent at Council of Schools, and she is planning on hosting, allowing us to use the new facility that will be opening at the end of August for the early childcare center, early learning center. So we'll have a place for our meeting and as well as the retreat.
Okay. So on Thursday, is, are we going to do the meeting on Thursday or meeting on, or meeting on Friday? Has that been determined?
So Shan has been running point on planning.
I think that's what we're wanting you to determine here today because the majority of our board members live in eastern Iowa. So we're going to be having folks travel to western Iowa. So we wanted you guys to discuss that today to see what would be most convenient for board members.
Okay. So starting time on Thursday, we're looking at sometime in the afternoon? Is that correct?
I think we were probably thinking something like late morning or noon.
Okay. Late morning. So those who live in eastern Iowa?
Probably Brian would be the...
I do live in eastern Iowa.
Probably the furthest.
I, it doesn't matter. If it started at nine, I don't care. I'd come the night before.
Well, I think we talked about coming the night before, if I remember correctly, coming in Wednesday and then being available for Thursday. And then a half a day on Friday is what I, what I remembered.
That's what we previously done.
And that, and that would be okay with me, subject to whatever other people.
I don't think we wanted to meet all day Friday and then drive five hours home.
I'd rather spend Wednesday night than Friday night.
Right.
Just because I'm old.
I think you're practical.
You don't know old.
Relative term.
State of mind.
So on Thursday the 14th, what time do we want to start? If the bulk of our work's going to be done on the 14th, then be, try to be finished by around noonish on the 15th of Friday? Is that, is that right?
Is it 14, 15, or 12 and 13?
It's 12 and 13.
Thursday, Friday, or Wednesday, Thursday?
Oh, yeah, 14, 15.
14.
That's a Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
So September 14th, what time do we want to start? That's that Thursday.
A suggestion would be to have the bulk of your meeting on Thursday and then hopefully adjourn at noon. And then that way folks can get home at a decent time on Friday.
Okay.
Should we, should we say 9:00 a.m. on Thursday? I'm just putting it out there so everybody has...
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
Cindy, how's 9:00 a.m. work for you? Cindy's giving a thumbs up.
And then does Dr. Morello have any restrictions on when we provide your use of facility?
Is our whole time at that facility?
That's for the retreat because, yes.
And then the goal would be that folks would come over Wednesday.
Wednesday evening, I'm sure. Get up early and drive.
And we would have an opportunity to look at the program that Council Bluffs has. I mean, that's part of...
Right.
Right? So we'll have some time with that.
Dr. Morello will prepare some information for you and give you a tour. And there will be a tour as well.
Well, can I throw out, if we're all there, could we start that at, if we're all there, could we start that at 8:30 or something? Just to... I mean, i- if everybody's going to be there, I don't know if anybody's going to drive that morning. I'm not.
I'm not.
So... Why not get going?
8:30 is good. I think that's a great idea. It's good to do.
There's a lot to do.
All right. So if we're going to start at 8:30, are we going to start at 8:30 with the tour or?
At the, you know, at an early childcare center, that's probably the peak time for drop off. And to have a tour, that would probably be very difficult at that time. So it would probably be later than that, later in the morning when everybody gets settled and in their classrooms.
We take care of some business and then do that.
I can work with Dr. Morello to work on those details.
Okay. So if we, this time, do we want to have our, our meeting on that Thursday? We could start the meeting, break for the tour at appropriate time and then finish the meeting.
If we have a lot of rules that we're covering on Thursday, it might be good to have a tour in the middle, like do all of the rules and then tour. And then, because it might be worse.
You can say he's not here.
No, I was just going to say like, it might need, we might need a, my brain might need a reset, depending on what we're covering.
Okay. So we'll start the state meeting at 8:30 a.m. We will take a break, guessing 10ish or so, whatever is coordinated with Council Bluffs. We'll take a break for a tour. And then we will finish our business meeting over long it takes that day. I'm assuming if there's a lot of, I guess, we don't know how long the rules are going to take. It could be a little time or it could be a lot of time.
One other scheduling note that we'll do, typically the community college council meets the day before the board. We'll work to host that meeting virtually on Wednesday in the morning then, as opposed to in the afternoon. So we avoid traveling over for the board members.
8:30 starts the business meeting, facility tour somewhere 10 o'clock or mid morning-ish. Finish on time as far as lunch that day. What do we have? Is there something that can be catered in? Or is there...
Yep, we'll look that up.
Lunch will be catered in. Finish the business meeting that morning or before lunch or however long it takes to go into the afternoon. After the lunch, we'll start the, we'll start the strategic planning after the business meeting and go for as late as we appear to go that day. Do we have dinner arrangements for that evening yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you guys do it again.
No. Dinner meeting, or not a meeting, just a dinner?
Yes.
No meeting. And that's to be arranged at a location. Those details will be sent out. And then on the 15th, Friday morning, what time do you want to start? 8:30 again? At 8:30, do our, finish our strategic planning. I'd be finished around noon. Does that sound?
Sounds good to me.
We want lunch catered in that day as well.
Or something that we can take with us.
Digital books you're going to get on the road.
Okay. Lunch catered to, maybe you can send out court. Who's facilitating our strategic planning? Can you give us a little preview of what that's going to look like?
Strategic planning is very important. And I, in the past, have used a, an approach with a SWOT approach. So discussing this strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And I like to lead this group in that conversation and then work through the process with that to, to come up with a real good draft of a strategic plan that then will be, will help with the, to be reviewed probably and approved. That'll be, or maybe on Friday.
Never know. So we'll be looking at our mission, vision, and then strategic goals for the next five years. It's always one thing to have goals. It's not to be put in place, the frameworks so those goals can be accomplished or progress towards those goals. So we've had some discussion about mission and vision in the past. I don't want to get into that so much right now. But as you think about the current landscape, we do have strategic goals on the website. If you haven't had a chance to, to review those recently, take a look at them. Some of them may be at a point where we'd like to continue those same goals. I think there's at least one of the goals that is probably already taken care of. And that's with the new state assessment was a goal. And so that can be taken off the strategic plans and replaced by something else. So be thinking of the current landscape in Iowa and LA today, but next five years and beyond. And I was, we as a board, and leverage whatever authority we have to impact education in Iowa so that our kids get the best and brightest features that they can possibly achieve. Anything else to add for discussion?
I would, I would just add that I would, I would offer that perhaps a good starting point are the four priorities that we talked about as the unified agencies, strategic priorities around literacy, college and career pathways, targeting resources to those schools and communities most in need, of which school improvement and EBS and data-driven decision-making is a big part. And then teacher pipeline. And we talked a bit about TPRA, but, but also the department's other efforts, especially around improving the quality of the data and the depth of the data that we have.
Oh, yeah. Is the department, where are they at in the process of their reviewing their strategic plan? You know?
We're in the middle of the strategic planning process and they reflect what I've just discussed.
Okay. So those are the four priorities.
They are broader level. And then, so for example, a strategic goal would be to increase achievement for all students in all grades in math, reading and science. And then they would dive down into those pieces.
Is that defined by a year's, year's worth of growth? Or is there some definition as to...
The team is working on how we can measure that because of course, we want to have metrics that we can track closely.
Yeah.
And so when we meet in September as a state board, how far along in the process will you get to?
We'll provide you, Eric, I think.
It should be close to around...
Yeah.
So we need to be cognizant of what the Department of Ed is doing as we do our work as well. And I'm sure that we need to be in a supporting role, not a conflicting role, but there may be angles that would be still important for us as a board to include in our goal that may be unique or different than what the Department does. We'll have that discussion. So bring your ideas and thoughts and be, I think, reflecting and make sure you take a look at the current website as far as what we have out there. Am I missing anything, Shan?
And I would just add that we also want the board to inform our strategic planning process. Of course, it's a government-wide process that is far along in the process. But we want the, the feedback and the deliberation to be both ways.
Can we receive some information prior to that meeting for us to review?
Yes.
Anytime we have an opportunity to interact with kids, I just love that. So if we have a chance to visit with high school, middle school kids during our tour or later or whatever, I like that, you know, especially from, as we go to different parts of the state. If we have a little time with that, I'd love that. Just a suggestion.
I know, but chances are, I thought there's some young kids. Yeah, we are. Yeah. Anything else as far as the upcoming work session, September retreat? Am I missing anything?
I believe so.
All right. So just in review or? we're gonna start on eight thirty AM on Thursday, September fourteenth. Start our business meeting. We'll break sometime in the morning for our tour. Those details will be out there when we finalize. Finish the business meeting. We'll have a catered lunch either before or after the finish of the business meeting. We'll start strategic planning after that. Break at a convenient time for dinner that evening. Pick it up on Friday at eight thirty for strategic planning again. We either have lunch catered in or skill boxes for your travel home. Try to end in around noon on that Friday. Okay. So that's a wrap. We are at, yeah, we're just flying ahead of schedule today. Board reports. Assuming lunch is not due. Cassandra, why don't you start the board report with the community college?
Yes, so July nineteenth, we hosted our first luncheon between Board of Education and Community College trustees and college presidents as part of the annual Community College trustee annual conference in Cedar Rapids at Kirkwood Community College. It was a fantastic event. We had thirty-six attendees between the trustees, the presidents, and Board of Education members that were available. I'm grateful to everyone that was able to attend. I know it was an event that kind of morphed over a lot of different things. So thank you for making time and adding it to your calendars last minute. It was great conversation and networking and just an opportunity for everyone to get together, learn a little bit about the opportunities and challenges that the community colleges are facing in the upcoming year and how, as board members, we can be better informed to support and advocate for their work. So great event, great learning, and I think something that we're gonna put on the calendar moving forward in future years. So we will do better at organizing coming up in 2024 and make sure that we have that available for, for everyone. So thank you again and mark your calendars for July twenty twenty-four. But just a reminder, we do have the Community College Conference, their first big learning event coming up in November. So I will remind you of that date. I'll pull it up here. And then when we come back around, I'll get those dates on your, your calendar as well if you'd like to join for, for their big event in November as well.
Thanks for your work, Cassandra. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Cindy, I believe she's on.
Yep, Cindy, John, and Rob.
So I was in attendance at that luncheon, and it was very good. Brian was there, Nathan was there as well.
Yes, and Cindy joined as well.
Cindy, I thought it'd be very worthwhile and appreciate your leadership with that. Sometimes we focus so much on the three K twelve that we don't always focus as much as we should.
I'm so sorry. I don't know what's going on. My phone's breaking out. You gotta figure out where it's coming from.
We're celebrating.
I'm so sorry.
And so we have that opportunity and others to connect with community colleges. I know that I went to attend a board meeting with Iowa Valley last year. It was, it was a real hardship. I had to travel half a mile to attend the meeting. I intend to attend meetings with NIAC and Iowa Central in the coming years. And I forewarn their presence and coming out as somebody who is critical of what they're doing, but to show support and interest in, in work that they're doing. Anything else, Cassandra?
I'm trying to find that date really quickly. Twenty twenty-three is flagship inaugural conference. I can tell you how to sponsor. Just come back to me. I'll get it for you in one second.
I'll come back to you. Cindy, do you have anything for a board report?
Hey there. Well, I would just add my thanks to Cassandra for coordinating the luncheon. Great conversations. I will say again that all of the representatives, whether trustees or presidents, were so appreciative of our engagement and our interest in the work that's being done at the community colleges. You know, we talked about what we can do and a number of the presidents, of course, expressed concern over funding, but also talked a lot about the, the transition counselors that are working within the schools to help advise students and what a wonderful program that has become. And I think DMAC, I think Rob told me that he's adding, they're adding more because they've really found the benefit of having these extra hands and expertise on hand. So thank you very much. I'm also in conversation with Carrie Fisher, who's coming in as the new Kirkwood Community College president about some one-on-one meetings when she gets in place there after October. The only other item, I did attend the Southeast STEM Hub. They hosted a Community STEM Day on July thirteenth at Collins Aerospace here in Cedar Rapids, first-time event. Obviously, I know a lot about what happens with our STEM initiative, but that was the first STEM fair I had attended. And we had over a thousand attendees, including, you know, lots of, I think there were thirty-two vendors kind of under a tent with hands-on activities. And then Collins also coordinated career talks and demonstrations and a couple of other workshops for some of the older students. So again, seeing our activities on the ground. And it was, it was a beautiful day, so it turned out great. But that's, that's about all I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Brian?
I learned a lot at the community colleges meeting. At my table, there was a lot of discussion about finances and the cost of, for example, adults, adult education in the community colleges, how it's the most costly program, even though it's widely touted. And we can sit here and say what a great thing it is. It's an expensive thing to do. They're the hardest students to recruit, hardest students to keep in the program, and hardest students to successfully graduate, was the impression I got from at least my table. Everyone thought it was worthwhile, don't, don't get me wrong. But, you know, it just shows that there's some heavy lifting going on out there. And, and those people are to be commended for their service and dedication to what they do. It was kind of an eye-opener to me, frankly. I also have been kind of involved a bit with the Community Foundation in Dubuque and their dyslexia undertaking. As a matter of fact, the local paper now, here's a couple of articles that have been in the Telegraph Herald. They're very much behind it. You know, you can't get a tutoring place unless you get to Cedar Rapids. So there's gonna, dyslexia tutoring will, I think, begin in Dubuque. One of the articles is by the president of the Community Foundation. And, you know, that's an influential group with a bunch of money. And it's influential more in not their own money, but getting other people interested. And third grade reading has been a, has been a priority for that group ever since I served on that body for ten years. But there's also a parent who's, who's an engineer and an MBA, happens to be someone I know very well, who is one of the smartest people I know. And, and he talks about his challenges with dyslexia that I had no idea. And then how he's dealing with it with his, one of his twin children. Very informative. It's brought the issue to the forefront in the community. And I think positive things are gonna happen. And they were appreciative of the information that we have on our website about that, which we shared.
I was reading, may I ask the article? There are some states that have required screening for dyslexia. We're not at that point in Iowa.
Early literacy screening, which can detect not specifically dyslexia, but students that are struggling with reading. And we administer that in kindergarten, as early as kindergarten. So kindergarten for second, third grade, it's required. But we, it's available to all schools up to through sixth grade.
So if, if somebody's struggling with reading, could then dyslexia be one of those?
Yes, yes.
Maybe not in September, but could we get an update on this topic? Maybe cut out in front of it for October?
So during the work session, Dr. Briannick and her team are going to provide an update on the science of just the policy.
That's today, right? Yeah.
And then I'm sure that that will lead to subsequent conversations.
All right.
Are there opportunities at the AEA's that could do screening prior to kindergarten or early literacy issues? Or?
They have a very robust, you know, early access system. That's specifically for special education.
Right, right.
Children, young children.
Just a thought to reach more kids at an early age.
I don't think I have anything to add.
I did contact the president of the AEA board at Grant Wood and said I'd like to do on a regular basis just to chat about challenges and opportunities in that system. I also have been made aware of some transportation issues, taking high school students to Kirkwood campus or training centers that provide the educational opportunities in the, in the high school arena for that head. So we'll be meeting with the city and Kirkwood and the district to see what solutions we could provide for those kids. Because if they have a car, they can get there. If they don't have a car, they can't get there. And great programs that we call our students to have access to. And then just to be aware that every board, school board in the state of Iowa, their majority is up for reelection in November, which poses a challenge for some districts. And certainly their superintendents, should that board flip, so just.
How many years were you on Cedar Rapids?
Seventeen. Not on it now.
I know you're not on it.
But Cedar Rapids, you know, they just got a new superintendent about a month ago. So there's just a lot of stuff going on. That's all I have.
Nathan?
Just to echo everyone else's comments about the lunch and learn, I certainly learned a lot speaking with, I think it's common in any system made up of small institutions that people try, they kind of think of themselves in a silo. And I've certainly, I'm getting lay of the land in terms of all the little silos that are in our education system. But it was great. And I think it's things like this that are important to kind of develop contact between those silos. Because it was great just speaking with people who are regular citizens who are also board members or trustees of community colleges. They're not necessarily from education backgrounds, but they care in the way that I care. We all do. And sort of find that common ground and kind of figure out how we can help each other and bridge those gaps, so to speak. Not getting into specifics or anything like that. But I thought it was a fantastic opportunity. So thank you, and I hope that we can continue to do things like that.
I've been visiting with educators. Obviously, the start of a new school year brings a lot of excitement and apprehension from parents to kids to teachers, staff, administrators. I mean, start of a school year is an exciting time. It really is. And there's always a lot of apprehension as far as, oh, if I'm going to a different school, even the same district will light that in and all those conversations that parents have with their kids. And as, you know, as we start a new school year, I think as board members, I have to be cognizant of the fact is that we, we collectively, as a state board, but in state process of DE and legislators, that there's a lot of demands put on our educators and the people that serve students. And we have to kind of keep that in mind is that it's, it's a tough enough job just educating kids. And when you have to worry about a lot of other things, it makes the job even tougher. And so it could be school safety. It could be, can I use this book? Or it could be, do we have a bus driver tomorrow morning to bring the kids to school? I mean, there's all sorts of things. And it's, being an educator is a tough job. You know, I just think as we go about our business, we keep our teachers and students in mind and give them some grace along the way as they're doing the best they can with what they have. Only other item I have, just a personal note. You can call it bragging, you can call it shut up, John, but I was selected for induction to a Hall of Excellence at University of North Iowa. It's a departmental thing. And so that's coming in October and thinking, okay. That's nice. Why are they following my career?
Outstanding.
So anyway.
We know why.
And that, are we close to lunch, Shane?
It has arrived.
Community Colleges for Iowa Convention and Taker Show is November twenty-eighth through the thirtieth here in Des Moines.
Okay, there we go. All right, we will break for lunch. Have power and come back for the, sounds good for lunch. Get the power. Good. Everything? We've been informed that the work session scheduled for after a business meeting wasn't properly posted as far as public notice. So we are going to adjourn the meeting for the day. And we'll have the work session on reading coming up in September. So since it wasn't on the publicly posted agenda, our meeting is over today. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Closed. Inside. You're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good to see you.